It's started Sammy Chavon, Jennifer Ragnow, Mahir Rafiq, and Robert Thomas all asked to be excused this evening. So it's Councilman in Barson.
Yeah.
Theodore Chase.
Here.
Robert LaCorte.
Here.
Charles Brown.
Here.
Rebecca Hilbert.
Here.
Mark Dancy. And Chairman Orsini.
Yes. So as you all noticed now, you have laptops. These are not consolation prizes or parting gifts. Leave them where you find them at the end of the meeting. And so with that, first item of business is regular meeting minutes from August 7, 2024.
Only Mark Dancy cannot vote.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCorte?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Rebecca Hilbert?
Yes.
Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Second set of minutes are from the planning board regular meeting from September 19 of 2024.
Rebecca Hilbert, Mark Dancy, and Chairman Orsini cannot vote.
Somebody else is going to have to move.
Second.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCorte?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Two resolutions, 2G Birch Glen LLC, Relief of Conditions, a resolution from October 2, 2024.
Robert LaCorte, Charles Brown, and Rebecca Hilbert cannot vote.
I'll move.
Second.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Mark Dancy? Chairman Orsini?
Yes. Second resolutions, 31 Voorhees LLC, extension of time from 10/16/24.
The same three cannot vote again, Hilbert, Dancy, and Orsini.
Okay, I can't move it.
Can someone make a vote?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
Yes.
Robert LaCorte?
Yes.
Charles Brown?
Yes.
Public discussion, no items, public comments. So public comments, the session where we open up to the public for any general planning comments, if you're here, to comment on the Rossback application or Macedonia Church of God in Christ, they will have separate public openings for discussion of their applications specifically. So with that, I make a motion to open to the public.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any general planning comments from the public? Seeing no takers, move to close. Say it louder. Yeah.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, so depending on the version of the agenda, you might have the Rossback application first because this is going to be, in my mind, simpler. If it's not first, I'm moving it first. So with that, Peter, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Peter Lanford appearing on behalf of Mr. and Mrs. Rossback. This matter was carried from August 7, 2024. At the August 7 meeting, I presented the testimony of Mr. Rossback, the property owner, who explained what he wanted to do with respect to this subdivision application, which was basically to create two lots of identical size and construct, excuse me, a new single-family residential dwelling on the newly created lot for his family. During the course of the meeting, there was discussion concerning the lot line adjustment. We were proposing that the two lots be of equal size, 16,000 square feet each. The board had recommended that we look at changing it to make the new lot a conforming lot and the second lot a lot of 12,000 square feet. Are you hooked up, Mr. O'Brien? Okay. As a result of those comments, Mr. Fletcher, our site engineer, revised the subdivision plan to divide the lots as was requested by the board. Mr. O'Brien will review that with you during his testimony. Two other things that we did do during the hearing. There was a question of whether we can obtain public water to service the new house and the existing house. Mr. Rossback met with the township officials, found out that the closest water line is on Eastern Avenue, but he is able to run the water line from Eastern Avenue to his property so that if the subdivision would be granted by this board, we would accept a condition as part of that approval to connect both of these new houses to public water. The other thing that we did do unsuccessfully, we tried to contact adjoining property owners to see if perhaps we could make our lot a little bit larger, although we are not required to because it is not an undersized lot case. But we tried to see if we can acquire some additional land. Unfortunately, we were unsuccessful in that venture. So with that, I think the only thing that is left to do is to move to the testimony of Mr. O'Brien, who did not testify at the prior hearing.
Do you swear the testimony going to provide us the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
If you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
Kevin O'Brien, O-B-R-I-E-N, Shamrock Enterprises Madison House, Madison Avenue in Rawaway, New Jersey.
Mr. O'Brien, the board is quite familiar with you. I assume all your credentials are as they always were, so I can spare you the CV. So.
Thank you, Chairman.
Mr. O'Brien?
I did renew my license.
That's good.
Mr. O'Brien, you heard my opening comments, and for the benefit of the board, you did put on the screen the revised plan that was prepared by Mr. Fletcher in accordance with the requests of the board?
Yes.
Okay, and can you review the changes to the subdivision plan as they are now proposed? And what variances we are now seeking as a result of the change in the lot line adjustment?
Yes, we are seeking variances for lot area for the existing residential lot, rear setback and distance from the pipeline. The changes that were made to the subdivision plan are that the lot facing Second Street at the top of the display is now a conforming 20,000-square-foot lot. The lot facing First Street, where the existing single-family home is, is proposed at 12,000 square feet. The applicant believes that these conform to the character of the neighborhood. There's going to be no change to be seen from the street for the existing lot. The new lot will conform to the other lots in the area facing Second Street and will meet the character of that neighborhood. We believe that this does meet the requirements of the master plan, which talks about maintaining the diversity of housing but encouraging infill and stabilization of current residential areas. We believe this advances the municipal land use law in Items A Alpha to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use or development of all lands in the state, B to secure safety from fire and other disasters, G provides sufficient space and appropriate locations for a variety of uses, I to promote a desirable visual environment, and M to encourage the coordination of various procedures shaping land development. In terms of a negative impact, we don't believe that there's a negative impact from this application to the adjoining property owners in that the existing lot on First Street will not change in any way. It's going to be split horizontally across the lot so that this will meet the character of that neighborhood. So we don't believe that there will be any negative impact, and I believe that this application can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance.
Mr. O'Brien, in preparing for this matter, did you study the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood and the lots surrounding the subject property? And are there lots similar in size to what we are proposing?
Yes, there are. I did do that study, and there are lots that are smaller than this one, the 12,000-square-foot one, lots that are similar to it. And we believe that the existing and proposed lots, the proposed lot, excuse me, provides as much or more lot area than 61% of the neighborhood. We did that through the tax maps.
One other thing that I neglected to say in my opening. At the last meeting, we indicated that we had an agreement with the pipeline for access to the new lot crossing the pipeline. I did get a fully executed copy of that agreement, and I provided it to Mr. Healy, if he wants to confirm that. But the township does have a fully executed agreement indicating that we can run our driveway through the pipeline. I have no further questions of Mr. O'Brien.
So yeah, that pipeline was going to be one of my questions. In terms of the setbacks, the variances that are still there, Mr. O'Brien, they were more like, they're more or less specific to these two lots, right? Sort of interlot variances, right? They don't really impact.
That is correct. The rear lot line will be facing each other. And anybody who buys the newly subdivided lot is going to be aware of the setback of the existing home.
And in your professional opinion and the C2 criteria, do you believe that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments?
I do, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Those are the questions I have. The board has any questions?
Can you state again what those benefits are?
The benefit is the provision of additional housing. It's rare that such an issue makes a national audience, but both of the presidential candidates that are running in the November election have each promised to provide significant housing because it's a national problem.
You mean affordable housing?
National, no, housing in general. Affordable housing here in New Jersey is definitely an advantage, yes.
Just want to make sure you are characterizing the presidents accurately, the two running people. Go ahead.
Yeah, I was just making.
What's the other benefit?
They're both providing, both looking to provide housing. So this is infill housing. It's not a green field as going out into a farm area and proposing housing. This is infill. This is between existing housing, and I believe that that is a benefit to the community in putting housing where other houses are. The fact that we're going to be providing water, city water, to both of these properties, I think is also an advantage.
Can you answer the question that was proposed in the report regarding how are two undersized lots a better zoning alternative than one zoning compliant lot?
What we're proposing is one compliant, one noncompliant. What we were originally proposing was two noncompliant in terms of lot area. And although they did match the character of the neighborhood, this was in direct response to the board's request at the August meeting that we provide a, bless you, a conforming lot facing Second and accept the residential lot facing First for what it was.
You stated that you did a comparison regarding lot size, and you put out a number of 60%, I think. How do you define community within the context of that 60%? What sort of parameters are you using?
Sure. Give me a moment.
I'm more interested in the homes that are proximate to this location in terms of their lot size comparison as opposed to all of Franklin.
What I did is I surveyed the properties between First and Second Streets because that's the immediate character of the neighborhood, and that's where I got my numbers from.
Okay, and out of that block, this lot is larger than what percentage you stated, 60%?
I said that it was similar to or larger than 61%.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Any other board members have any questions?
I have a com, I'm sorry, go ahead, go ahead.
Ted and Ram.
Mr. O'Brien, you were reading from conditions why you want to develop, and there was something there about protection from fire?
Yes, the new home is going to be fully code compliant. The municipal land use law talks about protecting from fire and other disasters. So an up-to-date, brand-new, code-compliant home is an advantage to the neighborhood.
But what about being that close to a pipeline and getting a variance to be much less than what our ordinance specifies? People remember what happened in Edison some years ago.
Yes, indeed, Dr. Chase. The Edison incident was a terrible tragedy for everybody. If you do recall, the reason for that pipeline having explosion was the failure of the pipeline company to maintain that pipeline. The area where the pipeline exploded had been repaired at one point, no, excuse me, had been damaged at one point by a backhoe operator who failed to report it. There's been no other similar incident since then. The pipeline has certainly taken their responsibilities a lot more seriously, and they now maintain, patrol the pipeline. And as you can see from the visual, the pipeline does run through Franklin Township, comes across the river. It does run down Eastern, right over to the vicinity of Culver Street, and then it runs in a southwest direction through all of these neighborhoods. It affects all those houses and in fact affects thousands of houses through New Jersey. This house is going to be no different than the other houses that are adjacent to or have easements on their property. As long as nobody runs a backhoe in the backyard or does something stupid. And this applies to the other thousands of homes that are here in New Jersey adjacent to pipelines. So I don't see it as a specific problem for this specific property.
Oh, in effect, you're saying that our ordinance mandating a 100-foot setback is outdated?
Dr. Chase, a zoning ordinance is a snapshot in time, and it's a one-size-fits-all for an entire township. When this ordinance was passed in the late, mid-1990s, late 1990s, the same ordinance was passed in hundreds of towns nearby, including ones where I have worked. I guess the league municipalities came with it, or came up with it, or one of our friendly attorneys came up with it. Everybody passed the same one. Where 100 feet came from, I have no idea. I went to New Jersey Institute of Technology. I never heard of any reason why 100 feet was safer than 101. So it's something we all did, made everybody feel good, and now everybody has to go through scrutiny. If you recall, we approved one of the charter schools adjacent to a pipeline because this board, I'm sorry, the other board found that they did not have a concern, provided all the regular conditions are met in maintaining and securing that pipeline. So I don't see anything specific here, Dr. Chase.
I have to say that between the present plan and the one with two equal-sized lots, I think I'd prefer the one with equal-sized lots because the existing house is being left with a 15-foot rear yard setback, and that's an awfully small setback. Now, I guess if Mr. Rossback is intending to move to the new house, it's less of a concern. Whoever lives in that, the existing house, may, children will be asking their parents why they don't have a bigger yard.
Go next door.
If I may interject very briefly. If you look at the new lot, though, the pipeline itself has little or no impact. It only goes through a corner of the lot, so there is significant side yards available on that lot. There's 44 feet from the property line to the one side, and on the other side, it's 45 feet. So there's significant side yard for play area, although the rear yard may not be as large as some of the others. There's sufficient area for a family, if they have a family, for the kids to play in. And again, our reaction to the lot line adjustment was because, at least at the last meeting, the board seemed inclined to do that. And again, there may, you know, we can move that line.
Yeah, no, no, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to, you know, yank you around. The reason we asked you to do this adjustment was because the board as a whole preferred the larger house, which is, this is a, this is a modern house. I would certainly not call it a McMansion or anything like that, but compared to the dwelling that's existing, it is a modern house, and therefore it makes sense to have a larger lot. And then the board as a whole felt as a planning alternative that, you know, we would like to see a more conforming lot, which is exactly what you did. So yeah, we're not going to have a, oh, you know, do you prefer the old version or the new version? We will rule on this version. So let's give you certainty. But that's why we did it, and I think that makes planning sense. Ram?
Yeah, I really have a question for Mark Healy. So if somebody buys the existing lot, the existing house and the lot, and decides to demolish that structure, can they build a much larger house on that lot? What would be our position?
Well, the position would be that the setback requirement, unless the board grants some type of, I mean, the existing house is getting the variance, but it doesn't change the applicable setbacks of the zone. So if they were to tear that house down, they would need variances.
So does it make sense to stipulate that the location of the house cannot be changed arbitrarily without coming back to the board?
I don't think you need to state that. I mean, if, again, if somebody was to, if they were to tear that house down and build it back up, if they built within the existing footprint, they would be allowed to do that. But if they were to change the footprint and they don't comply with the setbacks of the zone, those would be new variances. They'd have to go to the zoning board.
Well, and forgive me because I don't, it's, the existing house a two-story house or a single-story house?
Single.
It's one. So if somebody wanted to build a two-story house, they would have to come back to the board anyway because they would need variance relief from the rear yard setback.
If they went straight up, the way that we work it, if they went straight up, they would not need a variance. If they kept within the existing.
They stayed within the footprint, so.
And went straight up.
Sounds good.
Following up on a question I'm reading in our last conversation around this project, is, can you provide more clarity on why we're wanting to build an entirely different house instead of just putting an addition onto the existing house and doing all this?
I think Mr. Rossback testified to that at the last hearing in that the, well, I'll let, he's here, so I might as well let him answer the question. He was sworn at the last meeting. He's under oath, I assume.
Mr. Rossback, you were man under oath. Any testimony provided?
Yes, you know, starting from scratch with a new home versus taking the existing home and the footprint, which is basically, this would have to be a demolition, nothing. The cost would be so exorbitant to go ahead and take a house that is set up as a ranch with multiple bedrooms on the first floor, a small-sized kitchen, and then go ahead and go out, up, and over every which way and move out for eight months. The cost would be far more exceeding going ahead and putting another house up and starting from scratch on it. So it boils down to the point where I couldn't afford to go ahead and put the house to where it would need to go. And so I would think that the board, since that house is from 1940, would not want me to knock it down since it's within 1,000 feet of the canal. So I proposed to build another structure, and some other family can get use out of this new house, whether it's through renting or through buying. It's a nice little starter home, like it was for me 14 years ago. But at this point in time, it's been outgrown and bursting at the seams, and it's economical to start from scratch and not go up, down, out, and over. You're welcome.
I have a question. Back to, back to him, Peter. Are you saying you've done an analysis, a cost estimate? And your cost estimate proves that the cost to build a new home from scratch would be greater than rehabbing the existing home?
I am a contractor, so yes, I have figured out that it is going to be more expensive, not to mention the fact that I, with my own hands, have touched every single surface in that house over the past 14 years, and it would be a shame to throw away kitchen, bathroom, because everything would have to be gutted and start it over scratch to make it a modern home that is open-floor plan. So that is just inconceivable for me to put my house in a dumpster because it's all brand-new on the inside. So the cost to go ahead and move forward, plus the cost of the hundreds of thousands of dollars, plus the thousands of hours I put into that house, in my opinion, makes no sense to renovate a house that's been renovated.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other board questions? If not, open, may entertain a motion to open to the public?
Mr. Chairman, just real quick before we open to the public. I just have one question. And I guess I'll offer it to Mr. Lanford, and then maybe if, Peter, you can. Just the mechanism of how, so you said that both houses would be connected to water. Connection of the new house, that's easy. I mean, it would be a condition, wouldn't get a CO unless that house was connected to public water. How do we do that with the existing house? So, but here's, but here's a scenario that could very well happen. Subdivision occurs, the lots get sold off. It's one household in one house, another household in another. Do we not issue a CO for the one house because the other homeowner doesn't, isn't playing nice? How does that work?
He is the, he'll be the homeowner of both properties. I mean.
How do we guarantee that? How does that happen? As a condition.
We can impose a condition. Obviously, and I have to talk to Mr. Rossback, but maybe what we can do is even before, except that then we have to get an extension to file the subdivision deed, but we could probably run the water line before we file the subdivision to the first house and up to the property line of the second one. If you wanted to go that far into it, we could do that, but then we'd need an extension to file the subdivision deed because we're restricted in time for filing a subdivision deed.
Or could you do no CO on the new house until the old house is hooked up to water?
Yeah. Well, that's.
That's a simple.
But that's, it's a simple one, but I'm just telling you.
Are we concerned about the enforcement of the condition?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, I.
The lot, the lot that gets subdivided and the lot gets sold off, and now that house is dependent on the other house in order to get a CO?
Why don't we put a deed restriction in the subdivision deeds that he'll be subdividing it? He'll have both lots, and neither lot can be conveyed until water is brought to the proper, to both houses, or actually to the first house. He may not build a second house for a while.
I have no problem with that. I mean, then, yeah, he can't convey either lot until water is brought to the first lot, and the other lot has to be hooked up.
Okay.
Is that, that allay your fear?
I'm good if you're good.
I think that will address it. I mean, I.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to open to the public. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody from the public wishing to speak on this application, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
If I could just swear you in quickly in case you're going to make any comments in addition to ask questions. Okay, if you were sworn to the first hearing, you just remain under oath.
Okay.
And if you could just state your name, give us your address again for the record.
Certainly. My name is Cynthia Bacon. I am, the address I'm representing is 1440 Eastern Avenue, a property that's adjacent to the subject property here. I have one question before, I have a statement to read, but I have one question for that, before that. And that is, that has to do with the comparisons. And that is, that has to do with the comparisons for the property size. I'm a bit familiar with the area, and there was a statement made that a comparison was made between, of the properties between First Street and Second Street, and that this one is the same size or larger than 61% of those properties. Can we be just very specific about what those properties are that were compared? The properties that are right around there are actually, they appear to be larger.
Yeah, so maybe what we could do, because I'm sure that Mr. O'Brien doesn't want to read out his analysis, is can we enter that analysis into the record and provide Ms. Bacon a copy?
My apologies. I would have to prepare that at my client's direction.
And if you want, Mr. Rossback, who is very familiar with the neighborhood, can probably answer the question as easily as Mr. O'Brien, since he knows the sizes of the lot.
Yeah, I mean, the answer to the question is going to be what Mr. O'Brien's answer is, which is, that's the analysis. And I, Mr. Rossback, I know you live there, so I believe you, I believe Mr. O'Brien, because otherwise you'd be perjuring yourself, which I don't think you want to do. So therefore, I would just, you know, enter it into the record, provide the board a copy, and we can provide Ms. Bacon a copy.
May I say one thing real quick?
Yeah, sure.
Sorry. Yes, I believe she's looking for the more immediate, where Mr. O'Brien has done an analysis of probably the Eastern Farm section. In actuality, if you want to take my block and my surrounding neighbors, the house directly next door to me is a 100 by 100, 10,000-square-foot lot. The house on the corner of First and Culver is a 100 by 100, 10,000-square-foot lot. The house that backs up to that on Second Street is a .28 acre lot. So all of those are not in compliance to today's standards, and they are extremely smaller than even the proposed new ranch lot size of 12,000 square feet. Going across the street onto Culver, there are a cluster of three houses in a row that are 6,000-square-foot lots, very small homes, but 6,000, I could not believe it when I looked up the information, 6,000-square-foot lots over there. And so in the immediate area of this house, it's actually even more beneficial to talk about the numbers are even more favorable, that the houses are much, the properties are much smaller in the surrounding immediate block that my house sits on right now.
I can also give you examples, Chairman, which I don't know if my client wants me to prepare a written report, which.
Yeah, I mean, I, that's, maybe you can just, for the record, just do what Mr. Rossback just did, very briefly, very nicely, and just kind of give that sort of summary.
Absolutely. 26 Culver, Block 449.01, is 16,000 square feet. That would be smaller than the 20,000-square-foot conforming lot. 449.01, 28 Culver is 4,000 square feet. 12 First Street, which is 449.01, is 10,000. 8 First Street, 449.01, is 10,000. 14 Maxwell, 449.01, is 4,000 square feet. 12 Maxwell, which is Block 449, Lot 01, I'm sorry, 449.01 is the block. Lot 3 is the, lot number is 8,800 square feet. 18 Culver, which faces Maxwell, Block 450.23, Lots 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, is 12,000 square feet. I can put that display up if the board wishes.
Thank you. I would just submit that that data may be balanced by the other larger properties directly adjacent to the property that's seeking the subdivision.
And I don't doubt that's true. I think what the client, and Peter, you can correct me, what you're representing is, what you're proposing is not out of character for the neighborhood as a whole.
I think that's what Mr. O'Brien testified to, and quite frankly, I think what the board in suggesting that we make one smaller lot and a larger lot is probably the character of the neighborhood. There's a lot of small lots, and there's a lot of large lots. We have now one conforming lot, and we have one less-than-conforming lot, which is the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I think you're, you've limited character, character only to lot size and not the size of the house going on the lot. There's also another part of the character.
We can spend time going into that, but.
I just, I just want you to, you know, accurately depict character here. It's not limited to just a lot size comparison. We're talking about a larger home.
Yeah, and quite frankly, and we can go into that too, but if you travel the neighborhood, the larger lots do have the larger homes on them.
This is not good, it's, speak out of turn.
All right, just, we can go on.
Yeah, I mean, I think when you have, you know, when you, as neighborhoods evolve over time, right? And these situations come up all the time, right? Somebody purchases a house. How many of us have lived in, lived in neighborhoods where we've seen teardowns and rebuilds? Nobody rebuilds a 1940s ranch. They're going to build a modern home. You know, we had applications in the past, I believe, you know, where the blueprint came from a company called Monster Homes, and we turned that down. So, I mean, we want something in character with the neighborhood, which, you know, this home does not seem like it's like occupying so much of the lot that it's out of character with the neighborhood. But I'm, I'm taking up your time, so I'm sorry, so please.
Thank you so much for accommodating me. I appreciate it. All right, so I have a statement I'll read. I want to thank the board for the opportunity to be present, to address the updated request for the subdivision and the associated variances submitted by Mr. Rossback at 4 First Street. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rossback and his family and his team of representatives. Following the hearing in August, which was met with a few days of advance notice on the application, there was an opportunity to further explore the details of the application, which has since been updated. I am here to present support and opposition to the updated application, and I humbly stand before you as a former member of the community and one who has an interest in adjoining property. First, I want to be clear that I and my family support Mr. Rossback's stated underlying desire to build his new home. It's a beautiful design. It will provide a lovely setting for his growing family, and that new home will fit perfectly, but on the existing property. I continue to represent strong opposition to the application for a subdivision. I'll be brief, I hope, regarding the reasons for the opposition. First, variances are intended to solve problems, not create new ones. All right, so the subdivision creates a need for variances in the smaller-sized property. It's creating a problem. The existing lot, in its entirety, is robust enough to accommodate the house design. The existing dwelling would need to be torn down, but isn't that a common occurrence? Otherwise, the option exists to redevelop the existing dwelling on the existing property. Third, there's no evidence in this record that sets forth a requirement for this board, a requirement for this board, to approve a subdivision that creates a non-conforming 12,000-square-foot lot in an R-20 zone. Permission may be, but not a requirement. The application in this record addressing the sought-after C variants predicates need in two ways. It states, "A strict application of the provisions of the development ordinance would result in peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional and undue hardship." And I would submit that evidence of such difficulties or hardship to build the desired home on the existing lot as it stands are not present in this record. If anything, the sought-after subdivision creates peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties and exceptional and undue hardship. Also stated, the purposes of the municipal land use law would be advanced by a deviation from the zoning ordinance requirements, and benefits of deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. Again, other than for personal gain, substantive evidence of advanced, of advancing the municipal land use law purpose are not present, nor benefits articulated that outweigh the detriment of a property proposed to be 40% smaller than the required R-20 minimum lot size. Not 1,000 square feet, not 3,000 square feet, but fully 8,000 square feet smaller. And again, if approved, any further development will require, the zone remains R-20, and any further development will be subject to further vacancies. I will submit to you that if the intention is to create a precedent for gaining smaller lot sizes, which remain encumbered, the optic is one of distastefully creating a workaround of the existing zoning regulations that form expectations for people who own, purchase, or reside in this R-20 zone. I'm one of them. Others are present. If larger-scale change, looking for problem-solving always, right? So if larger change, larger-scale change is sought, let's work on it as a community. Let's bring the need or desire by all members of the community to our leadership for a permanent and lasting change. I now turn to the importance of a credible and transparent intention and process. The need for subdivision and variances sought here raised curiosity, and a number of inconsistencies were brought forward. So in the interest of, I trust, but I verify, I'm going to offer the following, and I have some documents that I'm just going to submit for the record here.
What are these documents? Just, do you have a copy for Mr. Lanford? Okay. If you can let us know what it is you're providing. So, how many pages?
So there are a total of five pages, I believe. Four exhibits.
Okay, so we'll call them Exhibit 01, 2, and 3, and if you could explain what those are.
Okay. So Exhibits 1, 2, and 3, which are three pages of pictures, are photographs taken of the existing property at 4 First Street. The fourth exhibit, which is a two-page document, is the zone, a zoning permit that was unearthed during a FOIA request for some information on what the history is here of the development of this property. I want to refer to the applications that were filed here, and they're part of the record parts. There are two applications that were filed that were not updated. They were, they remain of record. And Parts C or D ask broadly, if there has been any previous appeal request or application to this or any other township boards or tech review committee involving the property, and the applicant responded no on both documents, which were signed and notarized. However, public record reveals at least two requests for a zoning permit, initially in 2018, and currently updated in 2022 from applicant Mr. Rossback, to construct an oversized freestanding garage on the existing property. And that's the exhibit that I provided to you, the two-page zoning permit. The application was returned by the township to him with further instructions as to how to properly substantiate and apply for the consideration. That wasn't presented here as part of the consideration for this board or anybody else who is aware of this request. And so I ask you just rhetorically, perhaps, what are the implications for misrepresentation or omission on an application? Notably, and furthermore, the previously undisclosed closed application to construct, construct a large freestanding garage includes a reference to a zoning violation for operating commercial use on the property at 4 First Street. And there remains, in fact, evidence of continued commercial operation, with commercial vehicles parked in the street, on First Street, a backhoe front end loader parked adjacent to the house on the property. Why not share such information to be vetted? Those are the photographs that we're providing to you. And again, backhoe, we're hearing about backhoes because we still have this concern Also unavailable in public records is evidence of required permits and a CO associated with major work that was performed on the existing dwelling. There is evidence, and Mr. Rossback can respond to this as he is here, there's evidence that the foundation of the existing dwelling was lifted with additional rows of cinder block added. And I am very happy to apologize if I am incorrect, but my experience is that such work requires permits, inspections, and a CO. None of these documents were part of the public record, so again, helpful Mr. Rossback can submit those documents to complete the record and move the needle towards a transparent and credible process. In summary, the application for subdivision fails here under the circumstances that are present. The application before this board is a request by one resident, and it presents it as an example of using a variance to create a non-conforming space than requesting variances to cure the very violation the challenge created. The impact has a ripple effect on property owners and their expectations. The instant case is a twist on a recent trend for developers to buy up undersized lots, many of them in that little area. It's very congested right there. I grew up there. I think I told you, you know? I was born a long, long time ago and, and grew up in that area, and it's, and it's become a very congested area there. But the trend is, excuse me, for developers to buy up undersized lots, gain variances to build on those lots. The distinction in this case is that that's, that's not what's being asked. The distinction here is that the applicant is flipping that calculus to request a subdivision of a properly-sized lot into an undersized lot, and then pursues a precedent of gaining variances to develop the undersized lot. So we've got it coming at it, we've, we've got it coming at it from both ends here. At the end of the day, these workarounds are eroding the significance or the relevance of zoning at all. There is no evidence present here that you, as members of this board, must approve these workarounds. This applicant has indicated that he wants to build a home for his family. That is credible. It's an understandable request, and that may or may not ultimately require variances on the existing property. However, there are no existing peculiar and exceptional practical difficulties or exceptional or undue hardships present that support the request for this subdivision. Moreover, absent a correction of the record, the intentions are skeptical in view of the history presented here. The home can be built on the existing property. The applicant and his family are wished very well with the construction of their new home. Based on the circumstances present, I respectfully request that the board deny the application for subdivision. And I again note that denying the subdivision will not impact the stated underlying interest, which is to construct the new home. Thank you.
I have a few questions, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Peter. You can cross, examine.
First of all, you made a statement earlier tonight that you reside in this neighborhood.
My, my mother resides in this neighborhood, and I am her power of attorney.
Did you not make a statement at the beginning of this evening in your testimony that you reside in the neighborhood?
I don't recall, and if I did that, I must correct that, because I, my mother resides. I reside periodically with her as she suffers from disease.
But you are not a resident of this neighborhood.
And I am not a resident of her home.
Nor are you a resident of Franklin Township, are you?
Not, no longer.
Okay. You provided a zoning permit that Mr. Rossback applied for some years ago, correct?
Yes, I did.
And you indicate that that should have been disclosed on his application, correct?
It appears to be a document that the application asks for.
It, and I will read the application. The application says, "Has there been any previous appeal request or application to this or any township boards involving this property?"
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Is a request for a zoning application a request to any township board, in your mind?
In my mind, I wouldn't know that, sir, but on the document, it refers to it specifically as an application, assigns it a number, and requests a date, application.
But does, does a zoning permit have to go to a board, in your opinion?
I.
So I've, I've asked Peter to weigh in on this, and I think.
I think I can cut this to the chase where Mr. Lanford's going. A zoning permit application is not an application that would go to a township board. That would be typically considered by a zoning officer, who would determine whether or not what was being requested on the zoning permit application is permitted. If it is permitted, it is approved; if it is not permitted, it is denied. And frequently, a denial of a zoning permit would be something that might be a predecessor to a zoning board application, but it is not something that is encompassed within the request on the application. So based upon that analysis and what you had provided, the no answer would be appropriate to that inquiry.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Since you, even though you're, you live so far away, you're so familiar with this neighborhood. Uh. Since you, even though you live so far away, you're so familiar with this neighborhood, how many lots in the immediate vicinity of the subject property are 32,000 square feet or larger and contain one single family dwelling on them?
Sir, I wouldn't know that. I will tell you that on the...
That's an answer. Thank you.
No, I'd like to, I would like to finish the answer, sir.
She answered the question, Mr. Chairman.
You should, go, you can finish. I think that's fair.
So, yeah. So on, on the Walnut Street side of the property, which is directly adjacent, I would submit without having a, a direct knowledge of the lot size, that those lots are significantly larger than, than 20,000 square feet, I would say.
So I think the question that Peter Lanford asked was, do you know of any that are larger than 32,000, which would be the sum total size of this lot? So I think where Peter is going in that question is, were, were Mr. Rossback to take your suggestion, say demolish his one-story dwelling and build a single new house on a 32,000-square-foot lot? Are there any houses in the neighborhood that reside in a 32,000-square-foot lot with one house on it?
I wouldn't know the answer to that question, but thank you.
Okay, then that's, that's where we'll end that.
I have no further questions.
Thank you for your participation. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak?
Sir, I apologize. I was not here last time. Did you previously appear and provide testimony?
No, I did not. I was here, I did not do testimony.
Okay. If I could just swear again quickly, if you could raise your right hand, do you swear any testimony you provide is the truth, all truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And if you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address for the record, please.
John Petrine, P-E-T-R-I-N-E, 13 Walnut Avenue in Somerset. My property is perpendicular to his. I look right out my back window since 2017 out of backhoe, but that's besides the point. The lots that you guys are referring to, yes, right around him, down on Maxwell, a few years ago, that land was developed into houses. But if you look at my lot, my neighbor's lot, my other neighbor's lot that is sitting here, they are all his size. There are more, that 60% that he's claiming. I'll bet you if you pulled up an aerial view of Easton Farms, 60% of the houses have typically 150 by 250-foot lots or thereabouts. They are sizable lots throughout the neighborhood. I've lived there for 57 years. I grew up in the house I'm in now, moved out for 10 years to Willow, where I tried to subdivide my property that was 250 by 100 and wasn't allowed to. So bought this off of my parents and just sold that. As far as, you know, you want to build a house? You would add a level. I'm in the construction industry. First of all, starting from scratch to build a house and adding a level, yeah, I don't know where he's getting his numbers. I've been doing it since 85. It's cheaper to add a level to a house, not to even factor in what it would cost him to run the water. Because when they started on Easton Avenue, my neighbor and I looked into it, and the guys in the water department said, sure, you can have water, but we're not paying for it. You run it up from Easton Avenue, and you're responsible for the pipes or any, if something breaks, you got to dig it up. It's on you. Because this whole neighborhood, Easton Farms, is one of the few areas that still has well water. So now you're talking about really tapping one in there.
Well, that's, that's kind of why the board, actually, you got to the, maybe one of the heart of the reasons why the board kind of sent this application back initially, was because if you, if you have these undersized lots, it's far better for them to be connected to public water. So that was one of the things we asked the applicant to do. I really don't want to get into contractor versus contractor, you know, anybody else has got estimates, knows how that works. So yeah, I mean, that's academic to the, to the planning question we're dealing with.
Just this past week, they, the, it's not Texas Eastern, whoever runs it now, I can't, Enbridge, I believe it is, they were just there wanting to clearcut some trees from some of the neighbors so that they could better view this pipeline. So now you're going to have a driveway over that pipeline, basically, if I can read that, if I remember correctly, that's going over that. So how is that making that pipeline accessible? Number one. Number two, let's say you don't. You move it. You put trees there. You can't put trees there. Basically, where that pipeline is, and I know it because I lost my shed and a bunch of trees when they came in, that's got to be 30 years ago, and dug it up after the Edison fiasco. And, you know, the, the whole landscape of my property changed from then and has changed since. So that's my biggest concern.
Yeah. I mean, and frankly, you know, we are having a discussion here about 100-foot, I mean, municipality can probably do what it wants. Ultimately, the utilities is a public good. You know, I've been on this board for over 20 years, believe it or not, which doesn't seem believable, but it's true. Nonetheless, there was an application for a PSENG substation on Bort Road off of Weston. I don't know if you know where it is, right near the high school. We denied it. Noise expert, we hired our own noise expert, the whole thing. And it didn't matter because it's a public utility, and you're building this for, you know, a public good. So truthfully, once a pipeline comes through, you're probably going to have multiple houses. I mean, if we were to go and see which houses were within 100 feet of the pipeline, I bet they'd have a lot of variance violations in retrospect if they were to be built today. That being said, the board can only rely on the fact that the applicant reached out to Texas Eastern, or whoever runs it now, and, and got their permission for an easement, which we now have as an exhibit. I would assume that putting a driveway over it makes it accessible and that you can rip it up, you know, unlike a house, obviously, you're not going to put a house over it. Whether we'd want to live there, that close to it, is academic.
Again, just putting, my whole point to this is, two houses on that lot is not indicative of the neighborhood. And you have a house there. He raised the basement in 2017. I looked at it. It was like that from spring to fall. The deck on the front isn't done. There's a bunch of stuff that started and not finished, like the door that was put in the back that goes to nowhere. Finish the house, or add a level, tear it down, put a new one up. There's no reason that you need two houses on that lot. So.
Okay. Is there a, all right. Thank you. Other question? Anyone else who wishes to speak? If none, I make a motion to close.
I'll make a motion.
All right. All in favor?
All right.
All right. Before I go to you for a summation, I'll ask the board if they have any other further questions.
I think we spent a lot of time at our last meeting talking about the point of zoning and what variances are for. In regards to this application, I now have clarity around the gas situation. I have clarity around the water situation. I don't have clarity, in my opinion, on why these variances apply. I can sympathize with what an applicant might want, what it might be easier for them or beneficial to them, but I'm just not seeing it for the community for these variances. And I could be wrong, but I don't know what other people feel as well.
Well, all I can say is, when, when we come up for a vote, you know, that's, vote what you, vote what you think is best. I don't know if you can provide any more clarity to the board, Peter. I mean, I know you have your analysis of the character of the neighborhood from both Mr. Rossback and Mr. O'Brien, so I don't know what you can talk about.
I just, I just want to be very brief. First of all, the pipeline and the issue of having a driveway over it, the underlying easement documents don't indicate that the pipeline has the exclusive use of that property. They have a right to put a line on in the easement. The owner still owns the property. If they're going to do anything over the easement, they need to get the approval of the pipeline company, which they did, and we provided all of the documentation, and a driveway is perfectly permissible.
Yes, I have clarity around that.
Okay. With respect to the subdivision, some of the comments made by the neighbor, I think, reference a C1 variance. What we are proposing is a C2 variance, as testified to by Mr. O'Brien, which indicates or requires that we show that the benefits outweigh the detriments. Clearly, there may be a difference of opinion and perception sometimes of people in looking at the same set of facts and circumstances are different, but I think the professional testimony of Mr. O'Brien concerning what the character of the neighborhood is, and the character of the neighborhood is not a 32,000-square-foot lot. The character of the neighborhood is, quite frankly, even from listening to them, is a little bit of everything. There are 4,000-square-foot lots, as Mr. O'Brien testified to. There are 6,000-square-foot lots. There are 20,000-square-foot lots. There are no, basically, 32,000-square-foot lots. This is an anomaly for this neighborhood. It is not the character of the neighborhood. So in reality, by doing, what we're doing is basically creating two lots, whether they were going to be 16,000 square feet each or 12 and 20, which are consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The other thing is that in reality, if you leave it a 32,000-square-foot lot, and the chairman indicates, you know, the McMansions, if Mr. Rossback decides he wants to build a 7,500-square-foot house on that lot, he'd have the right to do it. Is that, is that consistent with the character of that neighborhood? No. It's not. You're actually affording or creating a situation where somebody can build something significantly out of character with the neighborhood if the lot stays the same size. What we have here is, and again, we can agree on where the line should be, but we are creating two lots that are in character with the neighborhood. And Mr. O'Brien indicated that there is no substantial detriment to the zone scheme. There's no substantial detriment to the zone plan. If I were to be standing on First Street and looking back to the back of the property if the new house was built, I don't know where the lot line is between the first house and the second house unless somebody puts up a fence. If I'm looking at the property on, from Second Street, I have a conforming lot, 20,000 square feet. I think the lot that we're creating for the smaller house is in character with the size of the house, and therefore in character with the size of the neighborhood. And therefore, I think we meet the C2 criteria of the ordinance. The, the other exhibits, I don't know what they intend to show, but as Mr. Vignolo opined, basically, Mr. Rossback at one time applied for a zoning permit to put a garage on the property. It was denied because he needed a variance. He didn't go ahead with the variance. He didn't apply, which is his right and prerogative. It has nothing to do with this application. There was nothing improper or inappropriate in his actions. When he wanted to do something, he's here before the board, asking to do what he thinks is appropriate for this area and this neighborhood. I think if you balance everything and all the testimony that you've heard this evening, I think to leave the situation the way it is probably, in the long run, could be a worse situation than creating two lots that are consistent with the character of the neighborhood. The last point I want to make is that they raised the issue, well, if this was done for Mr. Rossback, somebody else will do the same thing. Well, if there are no 32,000-square-foot lots in the neighborhood, it's not going to be done by anybody else. The one gentleman testified, he tried to subdivide a 20-some-thousand-square-foot lot, and the board denied it, rightfully so, probably. But this lot is an anomaly to the neighborhood. And I think therefore, because it's an anomaly, subdividing it will make it a consistent lot, or two lots, with the character of the neighborhood being preserved. I therefore think we've made our burden of proof with respect to the subdivision and to the C variances. I thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
One quick question.
Yeah, go ahead.
Of my planning frame here, are there any other 32,000-square-foot lots in the, in the area?
No, there is one 30,000-square-foot lot at 30 Culver, and that is the largest lot. And in fact, that encompasses Block 449.02, and lots 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, 29, the old numbering. So that's in a...
So this is the largest lot in the area with, with one, one home on it currently?
That is correct. And after 30,000, you drop to 25,000. And the gentleman who spoke before is on a 25,000.
Okay.
There's three of them.
I'd just like to comment that in my experience on the planning board, which has involved a number of lots in Easton Farms, usually when there's a request to develop an undersized lot, the planner involved presents a report with a paper that the board can see showing all the lots in the immediate area, and allows us to see where there are conforming lots and where there are non-conforming lots. Perhaps Mr. O'Brien's testimony was sufficient. I would have liked it to have been, to have included paperwork showing what the nature of the neighborhood is, of what the, all of the lot sizes are. The only thing I've had to operate with was a plan simply showing the 200-foot radius, which doesn't distinguish between the lots under common ownership and developed versus the original extremely narrow lots from the original subdivision of the area, which by now have been merged into larger lots. So I couldn't tell what size lots there were in the area. I could tell there were some that were 100 by 250 and some that were 100 by 200. But particularly in the area between First Street and Easton Avenue, it just shows all of these mini lots as originally subdivided, which presumably provided some flexibility in what was actually developed. So now, I, I mean, that, that's really just a criticism of the way this was presented. It's not a reason for denying the application, but I have to say that.
And Dr. Chase, if it is important to you, and if it's important to other board members, and if they want that information, we can, again, adjourn this. I can get you that information fairly quickly, but that's up to the board. But we're not holding back any information. If you or other board members want to see that, we'd be glad to provide it to you.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with, I agree with Ted. It would be nice to see something that was like, this is the area we analyzed, and this was the result of the analysis. That said, I think between, at least for me, between Mr. Rossback and Mr. O'Brien, you read off a number of examples that I think, and your testimony, which of course you're all in truth, we, is truthful. That said, it would be, it would be good to provide ultimately. I don't, you know, I'll do what the board wants. If you want to adjourn and let him get that, but, I mean, I'm comfortable. And Ted's shaking. Okay. No, no, he would. Just like five minutes, he could get it for us, but it probably doesn't change the, the nature of the testimony. Last thing I'll say before I make a motion or whatever, and Peter, I assume you're done, is that, Peter, Peter brought up a good point about, I just want the public to understand C1 versus C2, because Ms. Baik mentioned hardship. So hardship variance is just a C1 variance, and that means generally a physical limitation on a land. You've got a triangular's lot, and you're trying to fit a square house in it or a square, and that can't be done geometrically. That's a hardship variance. C2 is, benefits, benefits outweigh the detriments, which is why you heard me ask, Mr. O'Brien, do you think it substantially? Because that's the way the law is written, substantially. What is substantially? What is substantially? Is it 51% to 49? Is it 60 to 40? That's up to the board to determine what they consider a substantial benefit over the detriment. But a C2 is not a hardship variance. It is a variance that either, like the applicant testified, would present a better zoning alternative, or for some other reason, the applicant wants that. But that's the burden of proof that you have to provide, is that the testimony the board believes from the applicant is that the benefits substantially outweigh the detriments to grant those variances. So, planning lesson over. So with that, if the board has no further comments, I'd like to get us to a motion. So I will, I'll make a motion to approve with the condition that the deed restriction that was discussed to bring the water to the first house is, is a condition of the approval. I don't think there's any other conditions that I, Peter, you can...
I can confirm, I'll just review the record from last time, and if there is, if there aren't any representations, they'll be included in the resolution.
I think if that's, you're requiring the deed restriction, you also ought to give us an extension of time to file the subdivision deed, deeds, because we can't file them until that water is, is brought, so...
Yeah, so let's, let's maybe go one at a time. Let's take the vote. If the vote is positive, then we'll talk about extension of time. Is that fair?
That's fine. All right, I can come back and request that if necessary.
Don't have to come back. We'll do it tonight.
What was the, the deed restriction was what? The deed restriction was proffered as you can't convey the, any lot until water is brought to the first house.
Right.
So you would conceivably have a subdivision that...
But, but Mr. Haley is concerned that if I filed the subdivision deed, unless you put that deed restriction in both lots...
It would, it would be.
Okay.
Yeah. It's a deed restriction that, yeah, that can be conveyed until the first, would that, okay. So I don't know that you would need an extension then.
Then that'll answer the question.
Okay, so you don't need an extension?
If it's in both deeds, that's fine.
All right. So that's my motion.
Mr. Chairman, was, is, is there a preference for which alternative, which lot line? Or is it, or is it for this new proposal with this larger and smaller?
No, it's for the new proposal. As I said at the outset, we're not gonna, you know, toss coins in the air and see which way they land heads or tails. The board gave the applicant direction, the applicant responded, and now we'll, 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 so that's my motion.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay, so before I call, poll the board, I'm not asking you to, but if anyone wants to deny it, you have to state your reason why you're denying it. That, that's all I need to say about that. Okay, Councilman in Barson?
Yes.
Theodore Chase?
No, I do not believe in creating undersized lots by subdivision, and that's what this is. And I have, as I stated, a further objection to the very shallow, very small rear yard setback of the lot with the existing house. I think this property is constrained by the pipeline easement. It probably could have been developed somewhat better with the same sort of variance if there weren't the pipeline easement. As it is, I just feel that it's putting maybe not 10 pounds in a five-pound bag, but putting eight pounds in a five-pound bag. So I, I admit that it was made a much closer decision by Mr. O'Brien's testimony concerning undersized lots in the neighborhood, and I wish I had seen them before while I was studying the application.
Robert LaCourte?
I have a, an issue with going from conforming to conforming and non-conforming. The water is an issue. The pipeline is an issue to me, and I'm gonna vote deny.
Charles Brown?
This one is a really, really tough one for me. I respect the applicant. I, I respect the fact that he's trying to do something, you know, for his family, beneficial. I respect the, the property rights that he has. I wish the zoning in Franklin would have allowed, would allow for. No, I don't want to say that on record. My bad. This is, this is, this is tough. I'm gonna vote no on principle, right? We've denied other applications, and I know every application stands on its own, but we can't just simply ignore, you know, our zoning code. If it wasn't such a large home on a reduced-size lot, maybe I would have voted yes, but I'm gonna go with no on principle.
Rebecca Hilbert?
I think I'm going to have to agree with Charles in this case and vote no, only because, again and again, we're having the same conversation about why we have these zoning laws and regulations, and it's our job to enforce them, so I'm gonna vote no.
Mark Dancy?
I'm gonna go with no. I think, you know, he has opportunity to build a family home that he needs, and no.
Chairman Mercini?
So, if I were a good politician, right, I could read your room and say no, but I'll actually vote yes, and I'll, I'll tell you why. I'm not convinced that this is out of character with the neighborhood. I'm, I'm, I can only go by the testimony presented by the applicant. I also weigh the fact that when this application was originally presented, it was two undersized lots. We asked the applicant to move the lot to create at least one conforming lot, which they did, and the smaller house is on that smaller lot, which is a 12,000-square-foot lot, which I do believe, based on the way to testimony, is not out of character with the neighborhood. And the applicant, you can say the pipeline or whatever, and you can give me pictures of the fact it is backhoe, and that's a zoning issue, not a planning board issue, whether that's supposed to be parked there, and there's a way to deal with that outside of this committee. So I, I'm a balanced vote, yes.
Thank you very much.
Let's take a five-minute recess, so you can turn your deus around to your next applicant. Okay, board members and public, we're gonna get back in session here. And, and so during the recess, Peter and I, Lanford, that is, talked, and so we're gonna take the next hour to talk about changes. But Peter, you wanna just give a brief overview of what we will and won't do tonight?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, I intended to present the, well, first of all, we, we were here on this matter on July 10th. We presented extensive testimony. The board requested some additional information, also requested us to look at certain changes to the site plan, which we did. We made a resubmission based on the last meeting, hoping that it would help us go towards an approval. Obviously, it didn't work in the last application, but we can try again. But we were here tonight, and we were gonna present the testimony of our site engineer to discuss the site plan changes. Our architect and our traffic consultant, as well as our planner, who has not yet testified. All the other individuals have testified previously. Unfortunately, for a reason unbeknownst to me, our architect, Mr. Johnson, is not here this evening. So I'm proposing that we proceed and try to get the testimony of our site engineer in, and the testimony of our traffic consultant, who did a parking analysis, and then carry the matter for two weeks, and hopefully we will then finish it up with Mr. Johnson and Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, sounds, sounds good. Locating all the documents on this new, new setup we have. So please proceed.
Okay, Mr., I will call as my first witness, Mr. Sadowski.
And, well, do you swear any testimony you're going to provide us, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And if you could state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address quickly for the record.
Ronald J. Sadowski, S-A-D-O-W-S-K-I, 10 Edward Avenue, Edison, New Jersey.
Mr. Sadowski, you're a licensed engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, I am.
And you've testified before this board and other boards, the zoning board in this town previously?
Yes.
And have been so qualified?
Yes. I testified on this matter as well.
Yeah, so, that's good, because you're, you're back again. So we like consistency. So yes, Mr. Sadowski is accepted.
Oh, boy.
Great question.
Mr. Sadowski, you submitted, well, you were not the original engineer of record on this application, is that correct?
That is correct.
The original engineer was Mr. Gazali of Fisk Associates. Mr. Gazali retired, and then you took over this project, correct?
That's correct.
And you submitted the site plan that was the subject of the review of this board at the July hearing, correct?
Correct.
And you did not testify at, oh, yes, you did. You testified at the, at the, no, you testified at the initial hearing in this matter.
Correct.
Okay, and after the last hearing, there were some requests and, for changes to the plan, and some modifications to the plan. I'm going to have Mr. O'Brien bring up the plan after he plugs it in. Site plan. Yeah. Nice church. Oh. Okay. Mr. Sadowski, what Mr. O'Brien put up on the board is a colored rendering of the revised site plan that you prepared, is that correct?
That's correct.
Being that this is colorized, we want to mark this exhibit as A1?
That's correct, A1. And for the record, the, the church, the proposed church is on the left side of the property on Fuller, and the parking area is to the right of it at the intersection of Fuller and Booker, correct?
Correct.
Can you take the board through the changes that you made to the site plan to address some of the engineering comments, to address some of the planning comments, and to address some of the comments that the board made at the previous hearing?
Yes, the previous site layout had 38 onsite parking spaces, and the row of parking spaces along Fuller Street had a setback of one foot from the right-of-way line. This revised layout has shifted the parking an additional nine feet to the north to provide 10 feet between the property line and the curb line. What we were able to do by moving the parking is to also relocate the plantings, which were within the public right-of-way. We've gotten them now onto the subject property. By increasing the buffer from one to 10 feet, we reduced the onsite parking from 38 spaces to 36 spaces. That was, that was necessary to continue to provide the existing five feet, which is to the north, I want to say by the, the corner of the dumpster pad that's proposed on the property. In addition, on the, on the, this revised site reflects the reduction in the building footprint, or the church footprint, by five feet along the north property line. We've now increased that setback, which was, the previous setback was five feet. We've now increased it to 10 feet. So those are the two main site changes from the previous submission.
Okay, now, with respect, and Mr. Johnson will testify as to what happens to the building, but the building has basically shrunk in size on the site plan by how many feet?
Five feet.
Okay. I note that you have provided landscaping basically around the perimeter of the property, except behind the church. Excuse, excuse me. The lot behind the church is, is that a township-owned lot?
Yes.
Okay, and that's why, and that's the lot that the applicant was trying to get from the township, and the township would not sell it, correct?
Correct.
And therefore, you felt that there was no need to provide any buffering from that lot, since it's not gonna be really developed? Is that correct?
That's correct.
If the board felt that some additional buffering would be required back there, you'd be happy to provide it?
Yes.
Okay. Now, the only other thing, so we have the record is clear, the only residential use that is adjacent to this property is to the rear of the parking lot, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, and that is landscaped?
Yes.
All right, is there a fence that is proposed along that property line?
Yes.
Okay, so that, that would then buffer the parking lot from the adjoining property owner, correct?
Correct.
Okay, now, you have also had an opportunity, I hope, to review a report from CME concerning the site plan review of your new plant, correct?
Correct.
And they've requested some modifications and changes, and some additional information in addition to what you've already provided to them, is that accurate?
That is correct.
Okay, and can you provide all of that information? Is there anything that you have an issue with or a problem?
No, we can comply with the CME review letter.
Okay, and in complying with the CME review letter, does that in any way change what the board is looking at, or all the changes that you're gonna be making basically technical in nature?
Technical, we are also providing six electric vehicle parking spaces, which will adjust the required parking on the property, being that we're proposing six spaces. That'll give us a net gain of six vehicle spaces as well.
Okay, so in, in essence, that is another way, even though there may not be an additional parking space, but that, that's another way to meet your, the parking requirements pursuant to state law, correct?
Correct.
Thank you, I have no further questions of this witness.
Board, have any questions?
The parking spaces for electric vehicles, you're going to have a charging, a dual charging station for each two?
That is most likely how it will occur, yes. So we'll have three dual charging stations, yes.
That's, I think, is sort of the usual practice. It's what the township has outside this building.
And we'll have one for, a minimum of one for ADA parking, correct, to comply?
Well, as a representative of the Environmental Commission, I'm very happy to hear that.
Any other questions for this witness? Maybe I'll just make, make an observation that I think, you know, your testimony goes to. So, you know, the first time you were through, we, we asked you to come back with some changes, which you have. They don't eliminate variances, they make them less severe. So I just want the board to be aware, as we go through the testimony, excuse me, that the lot is small. I mean, there's just no, no way around that. And so, if you want to build a church on it, there's probably going to be some variances. Same principle, right? Do the benefits outweigh the detriments? These are hardship variances. They are, they are C2, I believe, variances in, in total, and then there are some design waivers. So just, you know, the board can keep in mind, you know, the way I look at it is, if you're going to build on this lot, and build something on this lot, that is a church, which is what the use is there now, it's somewhat of a balance between the art of the possible, you're gonna have variances. I don't think there's a way to do it without it. The question is, does the board believe that those benefits outweigh the detriments? And so that's the way I want to frame it to the board as we go through this, because, you know, really, some of the same principles applied, applies to what we just heard. But I don't have any, any questions. I think, you know, what you explained in terms of what, what you've done, you could argue, could it, could, could you reduce building by more than five feet? Could you, you know, eventually, you're putting forth an application where you're putting a stake in the ground, saying this is what we would like to propose... a stake in the ground, saying this is what we would like to propose, and then it'll have to depend on us to, whether we approve it or not. Do I think you've improved it? Marginally, yes, but we'll see in the rest of the testimony, especially yours, Kevin, what actually we all have. There is maybe a question, and I don't know if this goes to you, so in your plans, you've taken out the mezzanine or the balcony seating, a lot of seats, like 60 of them, right? Which has substantially reduced the parking. Again, if this is not the right place to discuss it, stop me and we'll go to the next. We're good?
Until I figure out where you're going, I can't answer your question.
Where I'm going is simple, on the plans, it says for future seating. No, it's not.
It's not, and that should not have been on the plan, and it will be removed from the plan.
Thank you, because otherwise, anything you're agreeing to, you're going to say, well, you know, pick the card out of the deck and put it back.
That was not to have been on the plan, and Mr. Johnson will testify to that, but the answer is, there will be no proposed seating in the, at the present or in the future in the balcony.
So, okay.
The number of seats that we are providing, and I think it was 173 now that we're down to, and we'll get into how those numbers relate to what is required and what we are proposing.
No, that's fine, I just want to make sure that what board is looking at is what the applicant's proposing, and we're not doing sleight of hand for the future, so, thank you for that.
Didn't intend to.
As I recall, I think it's 183?
No. Hang on a second, I do have, although I don't have Mr. Johnson, I do have an email from him confirming the numbers. 61, 183 seats, it is 183, I apologize.
I just read them, the plan this morning, so...
Right, yep, okay.
Yeah, I mean, that's all I have, sorry, sorry.
Okay. Any other questions, I can go to my next witness.
I'll remain sworn in, so if we think anything, we can always go back. Go ahead.
All right, I'm going to call Mr. Troutman, but before he testifies, I just want a couple things that relate to his testimony. When we were here last, I referenced an agreement that was entered into by the church and RPM concerning 25 spaces across the street on the adjacent lot. I had provided to the board a contract which indicated that they were going to provide those 25 spaces. That contract, and I was not involved in that transaction many years ago, but that contract never was formalized in any formal agreement with RPM. I've been in touch with RPM, we have a draft agreement, actually, it was reviewed by Mr. Vignolo and Mr. Healy, there were a couple recommended changes to that agreement. I could tell you there is an agreement that will be formalized, I'm going to be making the changes based on comments I received today. Hopefully, by the time I come back, I will have a signed agreement with RPM for those 25 spaces, but I can assure the board that RPM has agreed to make those 25 spaces available. And that sort of plays into Mr. Troutman's testimony. And Mr. Troutman was here previously and was sworn, so I don't think we need to swear him again.
You remain under oath, sir.
Okay, Mr. Troutman, at the last meeting, you were asked to do a parking analysis regarding the proposed plan, all of the parking that we had proposed offsite, and also there were questions concerning street availability parking. So, did you, number one, do that?
Yes.
Okay, and when did you do that?
We were here in July, I knew that was a bad time of year, and luckily, we were carried to tonight, which gave time for schools to get back in session, everybody get back from vacation, so I did that the first nice week of September, September, whatever, that first Sunday, after Labor Day.
Okay, and the parking study, you, did you in fact submit a report?
Yes, it was Sunday, September 8th, 2024.
All right, and can you briefly indicate what you did in order to compile your report, and what the results of your findings were?
Yes, and I had previously been giving numbers at the hearing about all the parking, and Mr. Healy had asked for some documentation of those numbers, and I think it was also important, since two years had passed, to also get some fresh occupancy numbers. So, what I did is I went out there on a Sunday morning, starting at around, let's just take a look here, starting at around 10:15 a.m., keeping in mind that the church service doesn't start until at least 11:00, actually, on that day, it started at 11:30, and it had, it peaked at about 12 o'clock noons, but I started at 10:15 a.m., and I set up a survey area to survey all of the parking occupancy in the church parking lot, and all of the adjoining streets. And I also wanted to count the RPM parking lot to see what's actually available on Sunday morning in that lot, so that's basically what I did, I broke out every street face surrounding the site. I did Fuller along the church frontage, I did Fuller across from the church frontage, I did Booker along the church frontage, I did Booker across the church, from the church frontage, and then I did the block of Booker heading out towards Somerset Street as well. And basically, what we found was that, as you can see in my report, there will be 36 physical parking spaces in the proposed church parking lot. I did find in the RPM lot that there were a minimum of 13 empty parking spaces, so the empty spaces in the RPM lot ranged anywhere from 13 to 18, depending on the time, and all the time and data, and there's a map in the report that shows everything. I also found that there were 43 available parking spaces on the adjacent streets, and then we also had the agreement with PNC, if there's an event of such a size where we could shuttle people from the PNC lot, that would gain another 70 parking spaces, so I concluded in my report that there would be 162 available parking spaces for the church.
Now, let's dig into the numbers of the required parking spaces, since we've now taken out the balcony, and since we have reduced the size of the church, and you've reviewed Mr. Johnson's plans.
Yes, so where we are now is 183 proposed seats, at one per three seats would require 61 parking spaces, and with the EV credit, we provide 42 onsite, so that's a variance of 19 spaces. The agreement with RPM provides 25, and actually, the way I think it's going to work is that people are going to use the frontage of the church to park on the street, because it's empty, so they're going to use that, that's closer than RPM, and there's plenty of available parking. There were only, out of 49 available spaces on the street near the church, there were only six parked cars on the street. People do not park on the street in this area on Sunday morning, so it's wide open.
Is the area surrounding the church developed? Are there buildings, houses, and everything else, or is there a potential for additional development which may skew the numbers somewhere down the road?
No, it's all fully developed, all the houses are developed, and nobody's parking on the street.
Okay.
So, now may be a good time to bring up this quirk, which I'm sure you noted, Peter. So because you removed the seating in the balcony, counterintuitively, perhaps, your actual requirement goes up because it's now by square footage instead of, and so, in fairness, right, I mean, that's what it said in Peter's report, that's what I'm going by.
No, that's what Mr. Healy says.
Oh, okay.
But Mr. Healy, but your ordinance says that you are required to provide one space for every three seats, and when there is no seating, and that talks about, in my mind, you know, religious institutions where there is no fixed seating, you know, like some of the temples, one space for every 15 square feet. However, the space in the balcony is not proposed to be worship area, it's not proposed to be occupied, we are taking the note off of the plan, so I don't think you can count or should count, the balcony is having a parking requirement because we're not using it for religious purposes.
What is it for, then?
There's going to be some live streaming, there'll be cameras up there and things of that nature, but it is not going to be used for religious purposes.
So it's going to be more like an audiovisual type of thing, where there's, like you said, maybe, maybe sound for choir?
And I'll have Mr. Johnson testify to all of that.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be nice to know, because, I mean, if you're, so if you're looking for a waiver or whatever, based on that calculation, you know, I'm certainly going to ask Mark for his opinion, but, yeah, you kind of want to understand what it's for, because if it is, as you say, then the question the board would have is how do we keep it, as you say? And that it's not going to be occupied either by people who are standing there, whether it's fixed seating or not, that would be my question.
And I think we can discuss that at the next meeting, and I do want to make...
Mr. Chairman, let me just explain too, where I'm coming from. The original plan had, I don't know the detail, I see a balcony, a mezzanine around, you know, on the second floor of a church, it's a pretty common thing. In fact, you had, you know, your plans had seating on there originally, and there was a note on the plan that you submitted again, you know, or your applicant's client submitted, that said, "future seating." So, I logically conclude that that's part of the worship area, and it's available, and it's going to be open and viewable to the worship space, and available to put seating up there. So, under those scenarios, the way we've always applied it for places of worship, it's, if it's not fixed seating, it's the one space for every 15 square feet. If that's not the scenario, perhaps a meeting with Mr. Johnson beforehand, if he wants to explain it to me, how it shouldn't, if it's not open to the worship area, if it's some other type of scenario, I'd love to hear about it, because maybe it doesn't apply, but I'd need to know more.
Okay, I will reach out to Mr. Johnson if I can find him, and I will try to arrange at least a conference call or a meeting sometime next week, and we can perhaps discuss that issue. And to be fair, on the other side of it, also, your ordinance says, because remember, there is also a basement, lower level, that has seating, and that seating has to be counted in your ordinance. However, just, we testified previously that we don't intend to use, and we've done this with other houses of worship, the basement while services are taking place, that is for fellowship after the services. But technically, we need a variance because we don't meet the parking requirement because of the seating in the basement, so I want to be completely transparent as to that.
Yeah, and I broke that down, too, I mean, I did provide a subtotal, assuming the fellowship hall would not be used at the same time, gave the board that figure, and then there's the total when they're combined.
Yes, I just, again, I think we all need to be on the same page on this.
Yeah, and that's what I'm, that's what I'm trying to get to, yeah, okay.
I will make Mr. Troutman available for questions by the board.
Any questions for Mr. Troutman on parking?
Yeah, just a few, and they're in my report, I don't know if you've had a chance to...
I did.
And I think I get, my first question was, what's this no-build, I guess the no-build is, is, the current situation is 47, and then, I guess, in the build scenario, you're eliminating some curb cuts, so there's going to be some additional on-street parking available, so the on-street parking supply in the area is actually going up from 47 to 49?
Correct.
Okay, this is why testimony sometimes clarifies things. So, well, I think you also answered the next question, because I had asked, are you using up all of the parking supply or portion of? Well, I actually, can you actually, can you answer that question?
Yeah, no, I can answer that. I believe it would be a portion of, I don't see the block of Booker between Fuller and Somerset really being used, I see Fuller along the church frontage and right across being used, and I see both sides of Booker potentially being used, and then the RPM lot. But there would be all that available parking going down Booker towards Somerset would be the next, I think, block that would be used.
Okay, and then I had some questions, my report was done before we saw the draft agreement with RPM. So, Mr. Lafferty, could you just summarize what that agreement says?
Yeah.
Timeframe, et cetera?
And it also goes into another point that you raised in your report, as to how the building will be used and during the week and weekends, and this was testified to at prior hearings. Church services take place on Sunday between 10:00 a.m. and 3:00 p.m. My original discussion with RPM was that, you know, therefore, we would like the use of their parking lot between 10:00 and 3:00, but then I, you know, sort of said, well, people got to get there before 10:00, and they usually leave a little after, so I amended the agreement in one spot to say 10:00, 9:30, and 3:30, which they've agreed to, but I have to, that's one of the modifications to the agreement. So the primary church service is on Sunday from 10:00 to 3:00, and that's when we have the right to use the RPM lot. As was testified to at the prior hearing, there are some Bible studies, there's choir practice, there are other religious activities that will take place at the church during the week, in the evenings, and the testimony was that historically and in the future, they don't anticipate that there are more than 60 people attending either the Bible study or choir, and assuming even that it's a little bit more than 60 or 70 people, there's obviously more than adequate parking spaces onsite to handle those, forgetting about the street parking or anything else. There are no festivals that we are proposing, no major religious holidays other than Christmas, and on Christmas, there's a Saturday, or Christmas Day service, and we have the right to use the RPM lot for Christmas services. There are normal funerals or weddings, but no other outdoor religious activities or major religious activities that take place at the house of worship, and I think that's, and we testified at a prior hearing that we have no intention of renting the basement for any outside usage, and that should be a condition of approval, that was asked by Mr. Healy. So, all of those things have been testified to previously, but I'll get them on the record again in case somebody forgot.
Yes, thank you for providing, I think it probably was a few hearings ago, so thank you for bringing that back.
Since this application was filed in 2017, a lot has gone by.
Yeah, I mean, you know, the way I look at it is, uses evolve, so, I mean, while you may, I mean, let's just say, you know, you have a wedding or a funeral of somebody, pillar of the community, and it may take your entire, it may take the entire capacity, and that's fine, because if you have the parking for it, however you've cobbled it together here, right, we know it's not going to be onsite, then that's the key thing. I just think that, you know, for the board purposes, and I know your intentions are all the best, it's very hard, and it's impossible to enforce, it's impossible to police, and it's just plain impractical to say, you know, choir's never going to be more than 30 people practicing, our Bible studies never, you can't even bet on that, you just have to, you have, the board has to do it through planning and engineering control, and one of those is parking, right, which self-limits things, and seating, obviously, which self-limits things. I wouldn't care if it was filled to capacity for every event, if you've got the right parking, right, if you've got everything, but I just, I mean, you can say the basement is not going to be rented out, make that a condition of approval, and that is enforceable, but most of the rest of the things, for the board, I think, are impractical to consider.
Yeah, and again, I think you've got to understand that this congregation, and here's where I have an issue, sometimes when I come to these meetings, to be honest with you, you're sitting there concerned about all these people coming to the services and not having enough parking, and we need parking, we need parking, and then, at one of the meetings, you said, well, there's only... then, at one of the meetings, you said, well, there's only 70 families, why do you have to have such a big building? If we only have 70 families, we don't need a lot of parking, so, you know, you know...
No, and it certainly isn't specific to this congregation, I mean, obviously, temples and mosques, we've heard before, they say the same things, and again, the board just has to do it through a planning and engineering control, it, it's no different than the, you know, when you have a, a use and they say, oh, the dumpster, and we promise that the, the garbage is not gonna be picked up before 7:00 in the morning, and nobody's gonna have to hear that. This board, 10 years from now, ain't gonna be able to do a thing about it, it's gonna be a bunch of pissed off people calling the township, saying, why is this truck in my backyard, it's at 5:00 a.m. So, you know, as, as a chair, and I direct the board, planning and engineering control's the only thing that you've got.
And, and I also think, and I've been through enough houses of worship in this town, I've probably...
You have.
Done 15 to 20 applications, and every one of them is different, every house of worship operates differently, and, and the good thing about this site, even though the site is small, this is one of the few sites that there is street parking in the area that is available. I mean, other churches, like on Cedar Grove Lane, on Elizabeth Avenue, and all of these other places, you either park onsite, or there's no parking, but this site actually is a benefit, because there is street parking available, and based on Mr. Troutman's testimony, it appears there's ample street parking, and the chances of it being used in the future are not that great, so that, I think, is an important factor, so that's all I've got to say on that.
Thank you.
And, I don't know if anybody has any other questions with, of Mr. Troutman, and if not, I cannot call Mr. O'Brien to sum up, because I need Mr. Johnson to testify first, so...
Does anybody have, I, I think the only person who would step out for a second was Charles, if you have any traffic, no, I mean, parking questions, so...
All right, I will ask that this matter be carried to the next meeting, which I think is November 6th. Is that correct?
Yes. Just real quick, Mr. Chairman, I, I forget how we were operating the meeting, do, do you want to open it up to the public to see if there's any questions?
Yeah, yeah, actually, maybe we'll do that, for these two witnesses, for these two witnesses, let, yeah, that's, thank you, and we have, we have a margin of time, so, make a motion to open to the public for cross-examination on the two witnesses. I made it, but you can second it, all right? All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is open to the public, please confine any questions that you may have to, to the two witnesses. If your intent is to support the application in general and all of that, rest assured that there will be another opening to the public when this is carried to, not only for any cross-examination, Mr. O'Brien, but for any general testimony, so you might want to save that till then, not requiring you to, but that's an option, and with that, anybody who wants to speak on this can do so, please come up. Seeing no volunteers, I move to close. All in favor? Peter will carry to November, is it?
Yes, November 6th is the next meeting.
Okay, and I'll, I, I have two other matters on that night, I think, so I will discuss with Mr. Healy whether we think we can get to all three of them, or whether one of them should go down the road, but I'll...
Your applications...
Yeah, I, I don't, I don't remember what they are, to be honest with you, but I know there were two of them.
At least, at least you are handling them all, so you can work it out.
The point being, if there was another application ahead of them, we don't have that flexibility, that person would have that spot, but...
No, I get it. Let's see, do we have anything else on the agenda today? Hope not.
Before we close, I just, I want to ask Mr. Troutman one question, I mean, you, you did your analysis, when you were there that, that day, and I, again, I understand it is a smaller church with less seating capacity, but what did you find as far as the actual usage of the parking spaces by the congregants that day?
There was a total parking demand of 23 for the, at the peak of the church service, which, obviously, that would all fit on the new parking lot, without going anywhere.
Okay, and, and with, the existing parking lot has about 11 spaces?
Yes.
So, how, how did the people park that didn't fit into the parking lot?
Well, they, they, they did do a little bit of high-density parking in the existing parking lot, they parked a couple in, so they did get 14 actually on the property, and then there were nine scattered on the adjoining streets.
And nobody went over to the RPM lot?
Nobody went to the RPM, it was all on Booker and Fuller.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, and that, that brings me up another question, there was a question in the, and we can address this now, because it would be you, police report, they asked you how you turned around, what the turning, like, if somebody came into the parking lot and said, oh, you know, incorrectly, right, or was just turning around for whatever the reason, or just said, oh, I, I forgot something, I'm gonna turn around, do they back out, do they, what's the turning movement? I think that was in the police report.
Right, and, and the way that works at a church is that they have an attendant, and so that, basically, what they do is, once that parking would all fill up, they would cone that off, so you couldn't even go in there, and then once the whole thing was full, they, they would just cone it off.
So essentially, the answer is, you don't turn around?
Well, it just makes it so you don't have the problem, yeah, that gets rid of the problem.
Okay, all right, just wanted to get, we can get that report out of the way then, that was the only thing I had. All right, so we will see you in November 6th, motion to adjourn?
I need an extension for that, extension of time.
I will grant an extension through November 30th, and I will try to remember to send you a letter, Christine, but you may want to remind me, because sometimes I forget.
Thank you, I don't think we need to vote on that, so we're good. All right, we are adjourned, have a great night.